Check, check, check. One, two, one, two.
All right, welcome, everybody. Are we ready to start?
Yes.
Okay. So, welcome to our Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission meets the second and fourth Thursday of each month at 9:00 a.m. at 255 North Forbes Street, Lakeport, California. The meeting room is wheelchair accessible. A request for disability-related modifications or recommendations necessary to participate in the Planning Commission meeting should be made in writing to the office assistant three at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. We will begin with public input. Any person? Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. So, before we begin, can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to the Constitution, to our nation, and to God, and to the people who live and die for us.
Can I get someone to close the door, please? Thank you.
So, we will open public input. Any person may speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and is not already on today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Speakers are requested to legibly write your name on the signing sheet at the podium and state your name for the record. So, again, that's for any items that are not in today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak, you can come to the podium. Seeing, I guess we'll check the Zoom room. Yeah, can we check the Zoom room to see if anybody wishes to participate in public input?
Not seeing anybody.
No hands on the Zoom room and no hands in the chambers. So, we will move on to our first item, our 905 item, which is one minute.
Chair, if I may. Yeah.
Okay. And our consent agenda. Looking for approval of the minutes from the March 23 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Item 4A, Approval of the Minutes from the March 23, 2023 meeting.
Second. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so now moving on to our first item. Consideration of Proposed General Plan Amendment, GPAP 23-01, Rezone, RZ 23-01, and Negative Declaration, IS 23-03, to change the general plan designation of a portion of the parcel from rural lands to industrial and rezone a portion of the parcel from rural lands to heavy industrial. The applicant, Rick Reynolds, location is 18649 California State Highway 175 in Middletown, APN 013-046-04.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Trish Turner. I'm an Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department of Lake County. Today, we're going to go over the rezone request, the general plan amendment request, the project scope, and the site description, the initial study or environmental analysis, and recommendations by our department. The existing zoning and general plan for this property is rural lands, scene and combining district, waterways, and then also it's got a split zone with heavy industrial, design review, and scene and combining and waterway. The general plan is rural lands, resource conservation, and industrial. The resource conservation is because there is a waterway that goes through the middle of the property. In 1983, the Board of Supervisors granted Reynolds Systems a special zoning exception to be able to have their manufacturing facility on the zoning that it is for rural lands. At one point, the company came in to rezone a portion of it to industrial, and it was randomly recorded on a different area of the parcel. So, they're going to be rezoning to correct this error as well as expand the existing manufacturing zoning on it. This is the proposed zoning and general plan. The general plan picture on the bottom is what it's going to propose to be, and then the zoning on top. So, they're, again, the zonings are going to stay the same, but they're just expanding on one of them. This is a vicinity map. The project parcel is around 145 acres. The initial study yielded a negative declaration with no mitigation measures, and just apart from the Geysers Power Company being nearby, there are a couple of houses, but mostly it's undeveloped surrounding this area. We reviewed the compliance with the Lake County General Plan, the Middletown Area Plan, and the Lake County Zoning Ordinance. General Plan, Chapter 3 Land Use Element. These goals here are to encourage the overall economic and social growth of Lake County, to, you know, like, to have the adequate land and promote development for industrial uses in Lake County, and to maintain a healthy and diverse local economy that meets the present and future employment for the county. So, Reynolds Systems, they prioritize hiring local members of the community. They offer robotics at local schools to get kids interested in engineering, and so that helps the overall economic and social growth of the county. The local, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance that we looked at was rural lands, heavy industrial, scene and combining, waterways, and design review. Again, these are all going to remain on the parcel. They're just trying to expand the heavy industrial. The Middletown Area Plan for Fire Law Enforcement and Emergency Management. This property has a knockbox at their gate, so that way, if there is an emergency, the fire department has access at all times. They also have a dedicated fire suppression system with a dedicated water tank for fire So, the California Environmental Quality Act initial study was done, and a negative declaration was proposed for this project because there was no identified impacts to the environment that weren't already there. There is no proposed development with this project, and in the future, if any kind of development is done, they would be required to do a design review, and at that time, any environmental analysis would be done with that. And we recommend that the Planning Commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors to adopt a negative declaration initial study, IS 23-03, for rezone 23-01 and general plan amendment, GPAP 23-01, with the findings found in the staff report. And that the Planning Commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors that they approve of rezone 23-01 and general plan amendment, GPAP 23-01, based on the findings in the staff report. Any questions or comments?
I do not have any questions or comments.
Just a comment, a very positive comment. The operation's been there since the 1980s. It's a real asset to the community, and it's in exactly the right kind of location. A lot of people don't even know it's there as they're driving up that way.
I would just like to mention that I did do a tour visit of the property on the 22nd of this month.
I have no questions or comments. I'm prepared to offer a motion, Mr. Chair. Public input?
Yeah. So, we will be opening up public input. If the applicant wishes to say any words, you can step to the podium, or we can just...
Go ahead. Go forward. You guys have...
Okay. So, if anybody in the chambers wishes to speak or has any input on this project, I don't see anybody, so can we check the Zoom room to see if anybody's there?
There are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
All right. So, I'll be closing public input and bringing it back to the Commission for action.
Mr. Chair, a motion? I move that the Planning Commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the general plan amendment, GPAP 23-01, for Reynolds Systems, Inc., on property located at 18649 California State Highway 175, Middletown, APN 013-064-04, based on the findings in the staff report dated September 28, 2023.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
I further move that the Planning Commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the rezone, RZ 23-01, for Reynolds Systems, Inc., on property located at 18649 California State Highway 175, Middletown, APN 013-064-04, based on the findings in the staff report dated September 28, 2023.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. And there's a rezone? Did we do the rezone, too? Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a 15 calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the 15th day following the Planning Commission's decision on this matter.
Thank you, Trish.
And moving on to our second item. It's consideration of proposed revocation of major use permit, UP 19-15, for Legendary Farms for high severity violations located at 2290 Sota Bay Road, APNs 008-010-29.
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. What you have before you today is a request from the Community Development Director for the revocation of an approved use permit. This is a major use permit, UP 19-15, for Legendary Farms for commercial cannabis cultivation. Next slide. Thank you. You'll see the parcel for the site. It's at 2290 Sota Bay Road. It's approximately 41 acres, virtually flat. The smaller image that you see on the left-hand side is our slope layer over our GIS, and the grade out just shows zero to about, I think it's five or 10%. So, showing the flatness of the location. One thing before we move on, if you could just go back. Thank you. The reason for today's revocation hearing is due to what you see in the upper right-hand corner, which are hoop houses in a secondary cannabis cultivation area. This is the same location where historically the property had a use permit for the Article 72 cultivation. But when Legendary Farms was approved for their use permit in 1915, it moved to that further south location that you can see. Next slide, please. Oh, one additional thing I wanted to point out, sorry, is that there are multiple use permits at this location. What is most well-known in the community is the Rancho de la Fuente Event Center, and that consists of historic, recent historic hay production as well as an event center using the barn, things like that. All of the use permits for Rancho de la Fuente are not part of this project today. We are focusing solely on the Legendary Farms use permit at this location. Stay on this slide, please. As part of commercial cannabis use permits, conditions of approval, they are required to have an annual inspection for compliance monitoring. Our staff, which could consist of planning and/or code enforcement staff members, visit almost every site, the ones that we need to go see out on the ground, so the ones that are actively cultivating. We visit the site to just look for compliance to the project description, the Lake County Code, and all the conditions of approval. Legendary Farms was approved for one Type A3 medium outdoor cultivation, so that includes 43,560 square feet of canopy. Additionally, this canopy, since they're in a farmland protection zone, was due to be transferred over to the mixed light of the greenhouses. That has not taken place yet, but that is not part of today's project. Additionally, with this use permit is one Type 13 transport-only distributor license, water storage in a 5,000-gallon storage tank, which is located to the southeast of the garden, storage, processing, and packaging within the existing barn. This is the same barn that identified on the site plan that was used, that is used also for Rancho de la Fuente events. And then also machinery and fuel storage in the ag-exempt building, which we'll cover in a little bit. On September 14, 2022, our staff did go to the site for the annual compliance monitoring. They had scheduled it beforehand and met Michael Wegner and Melissa Smith, the permatee, at the site. Next slide, please. When they arrived, given the flatness of the parcel, they noticed a secondary fenced-off area a little under 800 feet away from the permitted cultivation area. They requested access to that, and Mr. Wegner did take them there. At that time, the permatee did leave the group, so she was not present for the rest of the site visit. When they accessed this fence, this secondary fenced area, they found what ended up being approximately 3,300 extra cannabis plants. This was noted as a code violation in that the Lake County Code is very clear about sticking to one's permit description and cultivating only in previously approved areas. Along with that site visit, the staff did request access to the two ag-exempt storage barns, which are located back towards, closer to the road, so not near this structure. They were denied access at that time. Next slide, please. Code enforcement, community development, and a number of other interested stakeholder agencies returned to the site the next day and met Mr. Wegner. At that time, they did deliver a notice of violation and a notice of nuisance in order to abate to Mr. Wegner regarding the violations found the day before. The law enforcement personnel that attended that site visit demanded access to those ag-exempt barns, and at that time, it was allowed. Agricultural exempt structures, according to Lake County Code, are allowed for the storage of farming implements as well as farm animals, like chickens, cows, things like that. The benefit of having access to ag-exempt is that when you're working on commercial farming or ranching, you're able to have a structure that is not, that bypasses the normal building permit review process. One of the regulations that ensures that these buildings are not going to fall down on people is that they cannot be a place of commercial activity such as cannabis processing or any sort of other type of time where you have employees staying in these structures.
Mariaa?
Mm-hmm.
Are you saying that the, one of the ag-exempt structures was used both by Mr. Perez and Melissa Smith at the same time?
No.
Okay.
But thank you for asking. Both of the ag-exempt permits stated that the structures would be used for storage of tractors, hay, and walnuts. Next slide, please. When staff entered the structures, they found extensive electrical lines, grow lights, ventilation systems, drying structures. We were unable to find any permit for electricity for these structures in our records. Next slide, please. So, as staff continued their site visit, they did find that electric supply was being routed to these two structures through extension cords that extended to the adjacent property.
What was the length of those extension cords to get from one...
Good question. I don't know, but I can find that out for you. It's actually not very far. The house is located quite near... Trish, if you wouldn't mind going back to the first picture slide, please. You can see where the cluster of trees are to the east of the approved grow. If you follow that well-worn path that goes to the gate there, it's, that's where the house is located. Thank you. Would you go back? The adjacent parcel where the power was being supplied is owned by Mr. Roberto Estrada with tenants in common Carl and Leilani Colrus, and that's the reason why later on, we'll cover their inclusion as responsible parties. Next slide, please. Lake County Code defines high severity violations as a violation of considerable environmental impact at the time it first occurs and which impact will be greatly exacerbated by its continuing to occur. In Section 49, the administrative penalties for failure to maintain the required county permits for cannabis operations engaging in cannabis operations beyond the scope of an existing county permit and/or engaging in cannabis operations while a permit application is pending but not approved does include the following. And I'll read this straight from the staff report to make sure I get it right. Failure to maintain such permits to engage in cannabis operations beyond the scope of an existing county permit significantly deprives the county of adequate land use planning, ignores the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, thereby creating the possible of substantial jeopardy to the environment and impacts the safety of all county residents. Further, the failure to obtain the necessary permits to engage in cannabis cultivation legally in Lake County is a fraud against the county, depriving the county of the tax to which it is lawfully due, and constitutes an unlawful business practice, which puts those engaged in permitted cannabis cultivation operations at a distinct and significant The approximately 300, or 3,340 cannabis plants found inside or outside the approved canopy area for Legendary Farms and the cultivation activities taking place within those two unpermitted structures, which had ag-exempt status but no building permits, are high severity violations of the Lake County Code. The Code further goes on to describe responsible persons. And let me just pause to let you know that the extension cord was approximately at least 360 feet. The Code goes on to describe responsible persons as a person who causes or materially contributes to the causation of an administrative violation, a person who maintains or allows an administrative violation to continue by his or her action or inaction, a person whose agent, employee, consultant, or independent contractor causes the materially, causes or materially contributes to the causation of an administrative violation, an onsite manager of a business who is responsible for the activities occurring at the premises where an administrative violation occurs, a trustee or other person who is given the legal authority to manage property on behalf of someone where an administrative violation occurs, a person who is a parent or guardian having custody and control of a minor who contributes to the causation of an administrative violation, and a person who is the owner of or exercises control over any lessee or sublesssee with the current right of possession and control of real property where a property-related administrative violation occurs. Legendary Farms' permatee, Melissa Smith, former Legendary Farms' agent, Michael Wegner, property owner, United Investment Ventures LLC manager, Justin Smith, and neighboring property owner, Roberto Estrada, and joint tenants, Carl and Leilani Colrus, are recommended to be deemed responsible persons for these high severity violations at Legendary Farms found on the premises on September 14 and 15, 2022. Consequences for being deemed responsible parties are also covered in our code and are as follows. Section 50 regulates administrative penalties for failure to obtain required county permits for cannabis operations and other high severity violations. In addition to administrative penalties, Section 50.3B states permit ineligibility. Any responsible person or persons determined to have violated this section shall be deemed permanently ineligible to obtain any county permits for cannabis operations in the unincorporated area of the County of Lake. Revocation of permits. Grounds for revocation include that such permit was obtained by fraud, that one or more of the terms or conditions upon which such permit was granted has been violated, or that the use for which the permit was granted is so conducted as to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or as to be a nuisance. A recommendation for revocation may be brought to this Planning Commission for their consideration and determination by the Planning Director, which is how it has happened today. The hearing today was noticed. The Commission will remember that at our last meeting, we did not have quorum, and so we were unable to carry over this item, which was actually scheduled for that meeting, to a time date certain, which is what we normally do. And so, because of that, we did renotice the public hearing notification through the mail, or through the mail in that list or to that list that was distributed to you yesterday, as well as in the newspaper. The government code requires notification by mail of all property owners within 750 feet radius of the project site. The mail is sent to the mailing address of record for all property owners. It is the recommendation of me, the Community Development Director, that the Planning Commission revoke the major use permit for Legendary Farms and also include deeming responsible persons, the ones I listed previously, that are listed in the recommendation on the staff report. The findings are based on Article 60.12, Attachment 10 of the Lake County Zoning Code. A hearing to revoke a use permit may be initiated by request of the Planning Director, which is actually the Community Development Director, but the term is just a little outdated in our code. Secondly, engaging in cannabis operations beyond the scope of an existing county permit creates the possibility of substantial jeopardy to the environment and impacts the safety of all county residents. Third, that failure to obtain the necessary permits to engage in cannabis cultivation legally in Lake County is a fraud against the county, depriving the county of the tax to which it is lawfully due, and constitutes an unlawful business practice, which puts those engaged in permitted cannabis cultivation operations at a distinct and significant disadvantage. Fourth, the approximately 3,340 cannabis plants found outside the approved canopy area and the cultivation activities taking place within the two unpermitted structures are high severity violations of the Lake County Code. And lastly, additional unpermitted cannabis cultivation and processing taking place in the unpermitted structures was supported by electrical power coming from the adjacent parcel owned by Mr. Roberto Estrada with joint tenants Carl and Leilani Colrus. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions as of yet. Um, yeah.
Yeah, no questions at this time. Am I opening this up for public comment as well?
This is a noticed public hearing, yes.
Okay. So, we'll be opening public comment on this item. Anybody that wishes to speak, you will be given three minutes, and we do have a timer. So, if you pass those three minutes, we'll let you know, so you can wrap up the comment. So, please state your first and last name.
Sure. My name is Edie Lerman, and I represent Roberto Estrada. I was retained... I was retained on this the day before yesterday. He was never given notice. He never received any mail regarding this. I would ask for us to have some time, given the impact that this would have on Mr. Estrada. Additionally, I'd like to point out that there's zero evidence that Mr. Estrada knew about electricity going from his place. We have no evidence whatsoever that that electrical cord was plugged in to Mr. Estrada's place, and he did not reside there. He owns the property, hadn't been there, had nothing to do with the cultivation, didn't know about these proceedings until his neighbor notified him the day before yesterday. So I just think the... I really respect and understand and appreciate what you guys are doing, and I do think it's important to protect the permits and really appreciate where Lake County is with their permitting process. However, this is really far-fetched, to go after a neighbor of a cultivation that we potentially know was happening, all the greenhouses are happening, all the cultivation is happening, not on Mr. Estrada's property. So to hold a property owner accountable and say that he cannot have any more permits in this county or any permits in the future in this county when he had, there's zero evidence of his involvement with this cultivation. And to move forward on this today without giving him adequate notice, he owns a property close by, but not only that, his name is included in this, and you're talking about prohibiting this property owner from licensing in the future permanently. So I really think this is far-fetched, and you can achieve what you're trying to do without including my client's name in this. Additionally, the code doesn't allow for this type of offense to go on as a first offense and be prohibited from neighboring property owners. The environmental impact of what Mr. Estrada's involvement was, was literally, potentially, that he didn't know or that a property next door plugged something into his electricity. There's no evidence that there was a cultivation happening or there was any electricity part of this cultivation. The cultivation was happening, all the plants are found in greenhouses, so they have nothing to do with this electrical cord that's connected to these buildings that are essentially empty. And there's no relation to Mr. Estrada and these buildings. We don't know how long that cord's been there. So I just would ask that you renotice this hearing. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Question for you?
Yes.
Is 1275 Fourth Street, Box 139 Santa Rosa, the proper mailing address for Mr. Estrada?
I was actually just trying to check with him because this is the first I had heard of him being mailed notice.
That would be helpful to know if you could confirm that for us today or not?
Yes, I'll definitely do that. I sent him a text.
And being an absentee landowner, would he have not noticed a huge increase in his PG&E bills?
But there's no evidence of a huge increase in his PG&E bills.
How do you know that?
And I don't even know that he didn't have a tenant that was paying the PG&E bills.
My question was, if he was not onsite and somebody else wrongly illegally plugged in to his power source, wouldn't he have noticed a big jump in his PG&E bills?
What I'm saying, sir, is that I have no evidence that that PG&E bill either increased or was even in his name.
I'm asking if Mr. Estrada had ever noticed an increase, wouldn't that be odd that...
He never mentioned any kind of increase to me, and I'm sure that he would have noticed if there was a huge cultivation.
Well, it would be helpful to know the answer to that question as well.
I would be happy to provide an affidavit from Mr. Estrada if I was given an opportunity to do that. I was literally hired the day before yesterday, so...
Well, if you're in touch with him about the address, can't you just ask him about his utility bills?
Yeah, I can.
Great.
I'll text him.
If anybody else wishes to speak, remember to state your first and last name.
Yes, good morning. Joe Rogaway here on behalf of United Investment Ventures LLC, as well as Legendary Farms LLC. Legendary Farms is the permitee, yet Legendary Farms is not a party to this action. Legendary Farms has never received a notice of violation for any conduct whatsoever. When this all occurred, the notice violation and the notice of nuisance and abatement was issued to United Investment Ventures LLC. And the reason for that is because at the time, on September 14th, 2022, so this is over a year ago, and that's a separate issue that I address in my written comments, and I should say that my speaking comments are supplementing the written comments that I've submitted, and hopefully each of you have had an opportunity to review, and if not, please do, because there's important information in there, also including the attachments. So with respect to Legendary Farms, this all started with respect to the annual inspection. That is correct. However, Legendary Farms is not responsible for the area where this cultivation, unpermitted cultivation, was occurring. That area is subject to a lease, and the tenant there is an individual by the name of Robert Luis Torado. And Mr. Robert Luis Torado, at the time, signed an affidavit under penalty of perjury, which was notarized, and provided to the county, to Carlos Torres from County Council's office, as well as Ms. Turner. And that entire fact that Mr. Torado, who is the tenant there, in his declaration, who stated that he was solely responsible for the cultivation, who stated that United Investment Ventures has no involvement in that cultivation, who stated that Legendary Farms has no involvement in that cultivation, that is all completely ignored by the planning director here. The staff report makes no mention of it, yet this information was provided to planning over a year ago. And at that time, when we had the discussion concerning the control of Mr. Torado over this area, he's a tenant subject to a lease who decided, and unfortunately decided, to cultivate cannabis without a permit. He took responsibility for that, and he provided his information and his phone number in the declaration, and as far as we know, the county never even followed up with Mr. Torado. And instead, what the county has elected to do is to proceed with the most punitive consequence possible against Legendary Farms, to revoke its use permit, when Legendary Farms literally is not a party to this action. Legendary Farms has never had any noticed violation, has never had any imposition of any penalty whatsoever. Legendary Farms is not connected to that unpermitted cultivation. If I could just have a few additional minutes, please. Thank you. So Legendary Farms...
Can we just put one more minute on the timer, please?
Thank you. So this is a grave injustice, because the county is seeking the most severe consequence possible from the property owner, United. And United did the only thing that any reasonable property owner could do. They are provided notice vis a vis issuance of the notice of violation by the county, and within 24 hours, they correct that violation. They eradicate the plants. The plants are taken to the dump. We have receipts from Quack and Bush as a part of the attachments to the staff report. And then from there, there's no additional penalty that is issued to United, to the property owner. And then from there, the county, with all of its investigative resources, with all the attention and evidently all of the concern they have about this cultivation, I agree that it is concerning, because the legal market does not want to have illicit profiteers that mess up the program. And certainly, a property owner and Legendary Farms' the permitee doesn't want to have someone else on the property that is causing problems for its permit. But the county never investigates Mr. Torado, and they never pursue any violation whatsoever against Legendary Farms. Yet here we are today, where this noticed hearing goes to United, and Legendary Farms is subjected to having its permit revoked in a lawless manner, when there is absolutely no attention paid to the reality that Robert Luis Torado signed an affidavit under penalty of perjury which was notarized, which means that he was signed in front of a registered notary where he had to provide his driver's license and give his thumbprint so you know that it's authentic.
All right, we're gonna move on to the next speaker.
Thank you. In conclusion, I just oppose the revocation and oppose the categorization of responsible parties and the loss of the ability of each responsible parties for the ability to have a cultivation permit in the future. Thank you.
Sir, was Ms. Smith unaware of that growing going on in the corner of her own property?
Ms. Smith is not the property owner.
My question is, was she unaware? She was there the day of the inspection and dismissed herself at the time the question came up.
She was in a totally other part of the property. There was no evidence that attaches Ms. Smith, Mrs. Smith, to those greenhouses. And that's part of the problem, is that the county never even bothered to investigate this. And when the evidence came about, that Mr. Torado said, "This is mine. It's not United. It is not Legendary. It is mine. Come talk to me." The county did nothing, and then here before...
Was Ms. Smith unaware of that illegal growth occurring on that property?
To my knowledge. To my knowledge, that...
Have you been to the property?
I have not been to the property.
Thank you.
But that, I believe that's not...
Your time is up, I believe.
Perhaps we should add Mr. Torado to the list of high propensity violators, then. Would that satisfy your concern about Mr. Torado?
Well, so long as Mr. Smith, Mrs. Smith, United Investment Ventures, and Legendary Farms are not included there, which there's no legal basis to include them there.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Can we have the next speaker, please? Again, it'll be a three-minute timer, and state your first and last name.
Michael Wegner, consultant and citizen. You know, I made sure that these letters came out to all of you, so I hope you all have copies of them. You know, the county's concern about illegal or illicit cannabis is an issue for the industry as an entirety. It is a major problem for us in the legal market, competing with people who are not set to the same bar and basically don't have the same overhead costs. So if you don't mind, I'll just go over what I distributed. I'm Michael Wegner. I'm a consultant for many different businesses. My work involves assisting my clients for permits, licenses, and certifications for agricultural companies. Typical projects include alcohol, beverage control licensing, organic and food safety certifications, and cannabis permitting and licensing at both state and local levels. I've been working in the cannabis industry since 2009, when I opened the first legally permitted dispensary in Sonoma County called the Valley of the Moon Collective. I sat as an advisory on the ad hoc committee for the city of Santa Rosa and the county of Sonoma when the county developed its initial cannabis regulations during that time. For clarity, my services are always at the request of my client and their particular needs. For example, I have an audit for CCOF for a gap food certification inspection. The client would request my assistance for the audit. The client would then tell me what is to be audited and inspected. I then review the areas and the equipment pertinent to the audit and inspection. I give my findings to the client and support any necessary corrections. At no point do I make any decisions for that client or go outside what they have requested of me. The scope of my services for Legendary Farms are similarly limited, and my connection to the violations is misrepresented in the staff report included in the agenda packet for the commission's hearing today. Moreover, I was never given notice that the director was requesting, as a part of the recommendation, to revoke the license that I be determined as a responsible party for the violations found at this location. I only found out a few days ago, when the agenda packet was posted. To be limited to defending myself for only a few minutes in public comment is fundamentally unfair and violates my rights to due process. The staff report does have factional information, such as my presence at the annual inspection. Legendary Farm owner and myself, or Legendary Farm is a former client. The report omits other things in the participation in the abatement and nuisance at the site and location. It was at the request of Code Enforcement Officer Linda Bill that my involvement in this action was there at all. It was in good faith when she asked me to help assist in the self-abatement. May I continue?
If you wish to wrap up your comment.
Sure. The long and the short of it is, to put me down as a responsible party is absolutely unfair and unjust. I go and I help the county and the people in the county or the state to be able to participate in the cannabis industry. To say that I'm then responsible for something else that's on their property or that they even decide to do is totally unfair. From my perspective, the narrative that is being written is not that of cooperation, but that of attrition, and I don't think that's the way it should be or could be. So with that, I think I'm asking that the board or the commission consider removing me from the responsible party list, and the idea and understanding that I had nothing to do with it, I didn't know about it, and once the issue was brought forward, I did everything in my power to work with the county to have it corrected. Thank you.
Sir, when was the last time you were on that property before the inspection?
I come in, I came in probably a week before the inspection. I inspect the site. If you want to pull up the...
But just my question is, and if you were there a week before, you didn't notice the illegal grow going on in the other corner of the property at that time?
No, sir. When I come to inspect a site, they have everything drawn out, right? Meaning like the cultivation area, the drying and processing areas, all of these are very well-defined.
Did you not notice that additional hoop house area when you were there a week before the inspection?
No, sir. If you...
Interesting.
If you were there onsite, you would be able to see that where the permitted grow is, is a huge distance away, a quarter mile away, from the unpermitted site. It's flat and level, so when I'm standing in the site, which has the requirement to have the fence or the barrier that's six feet tall, I'm inside of an area that has a fence up to here. I go in, I inspect the site, I measure canopy, I check tags, I make sure all of these things are correct, and then I move on to the other aspects of their site. I can't see through walls. I would have no way of knowing that it was back there if I went back...
But the inspectors noticed it and asked right away if they could have access to it.
The inspectors noticed it, but the way that I understand that they did notice it was from the property behind Legendary Farms, from how I understand it. Because that area is pushed all the way to the back, the way that they were able to see it, from what I understand, was from the other property. So standing where we were...
Time.
We had, I had no idea that that was back there or that that was going on.
I see. Thank you.
Hi, please state your first and last name.
Frank Perez. And I'm gonna, I've already supplied you guys, first of all, good morning. I supplied you guys with stuff, and with all this that I'm listening to, I'm gonna kind of jump through some stuff to get to the root of this so I don't get timed out. My name is Frank Perez. I bought that property at Rancho Dela Fuente 18 years ago, and I've had a very good success. Couple of you up there, and Miley, if she was here, her son worked for me selling vegetables way back when, when he was little. We do, did events there, labor camp, we grew vegetables, we sold them to the Lake County Jail, we did it all. We grew hay, I started with alfalfa, and we went all the way through doing hay right up to today. Back in 2015, we were the first people to be permitted, and I put a letter in there that you guys all got, for the medical marijuana. And when we were doing that, the person that leased that property for me was doing the wrong thing, so he got kicked out. Now, what I see going on here, because I've helped Melissa, we work very well together. I've taught her all the ins and outs of the, it's a complex business. We have a lot of things going on there. You've got liquor licenses where you have to keep people, minors, out and so on and so forth. Don't let the marijuana cross over with the alcohol. Plus, she has a lot of people that are, in my view, were not doing the right thing in her best interest. And I told her, finding out all this information, because I was working with her up until this stuff happened, because if I was there, it would not have happened. It would have, I would have caught it, because I'm like a dog on a bone. I'm a very hands-on person when I had the ranch and when I was training Melissa. She has other businesses where she was under the impression or the illusion that by hiring people to run the business, that's gonna take care of it. That's not. You got to be hands-on, you gotta make yourself out there to see what everything is going on. And I feel a little guilty about it because... And I feel a little guilty about it because I recommended this Robert guy, he's worked for me before, he seemed like a straight-up kid. He was supposed to be growing vegetables to sell to the jail like I did, and he was going to be doing herbs to sell to the local restaurants. That's what he told me. And I've always told him, wherever you can make any extra money, do it. So I kind of co-signed this guy, and somewhere along the line, somebody got in his ear and he started growing illegal marijuana. So with these harsh things, I, I understand, I totally understand about following the rules. I'm 63 years old. I've never been arrested, never been in the back of a cop car. I'm as clean as a whistle, and I believe in staying that way. And for Melissa, knowing her personally and working with her, and leasing that property to her prior to me selling the property, I think that she should have a chance to continue with strict rules. You guys have open, you don't need to even offer them that you're coming, you could just show up, whatever you need to do, put them on a probation, give them a chance. Everybody makes mistakes. When we had the, the medical marijuana, one of my workers was coming on his lunch break, I mean, on his day off, driving his bike to the back of the ranch. I said, what's this guy doing on his day off? I couldn't find him. He came back out. I went down to investigate. He was growing marijuana on the creek, side of the creek. He got fired. I went in there and pulled all that marijuana out. So things do happen with employees. And she understands fully now, and she's got to be in it.
We reached the time limit, sir?
I'd like one more minute.
If you could just wrap it up.
I will wrap it up. If you can give her a chance, I will commit myself with her to stay on top of this and make sure that this does not happen again, and if it does, revoke it.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yes?
Just a quick question. I'm sim, I'm sympathetic to your comments, and it feels like you did the right thing, dismissing this guy and tearing up whatever he was growing. Did you ever report the fact that that had occurred to the authorities or to the planning commission?
I didn't know he was doing it.
When you tore it up, you must have known he was.
When you located them next to the, the water, when you, you.
You mean the, the, we're talking about back, back in 2015, when we had the medical marijuana there.
So you're not referring to the?
Not the current stuff going on. This is when.
Well, how was that, how was that stuff from 2015 relevant then to the case before us today?
Well, I'm just displaying how people make mistakes. Employees do things that they're not supposed to do. You're supposed to, there's so many rules now. You gotta wear glasses when you do this, gloves here. Employees don't want to do that.
I'm just saying, a 2015 violation that you noticed and dealt with, perhaps without reporting it to the authorities, is not what is before us today, and it has nothing to do with what we're.
Well, yeah, it has a lot to do with it because I'm trying to demonstrate that when you let people go without supervision, things like this happen. That's all that I'm trying to display on that. It has nothing to do with this case except for as an example.
Well, thanks for clarifying.
Please state your first and last name.
Good morning. My name is Dorji Roberts. I'm an attorney for Mr. Wagner. I just wanted to sort of reiterate sort of two main points. The first is, again, that Mr. Torado has acknowledged that he was solely responsible for it. Mr. Wagner neither caused the grow on the unpermitted section of the property, was not aware of it, and does not meet any of the definitions to be a responsible party. The fact that this information was omitted from the director's report is, I think, quite improper and warrants an opportunity for Mr. Wagner to, you know, have time to properly prepare. He was not noticed and, you know, only by happenstance, found out that he was being labeled or that it's been recommended that he be found to be a responsible party. He was not. He was a consultant. His work was limited to the permitted farm, was not aware of the grow, and on the day of the inspection, he did not prevent the access. He did not, it was locked, he did not have the keys, and he did not have permission from the owner to provide access. And this, and when he was asked by the code enforcement officer, you know, to assist, he was able to gain them access, and they found, you know, you have pictures, so you know exactly what was found there. He was not aware of that at the time and certainly didn't condone it, and subsequently separated, you know, any connection with his client. So I think it's both unfair and in fact, a violation of due process to not have individualized notice because this body is sitting as a, you know, quasi-judicial capacity in deciding whether to revoke Legendary Farms' permit. But Legendary Farms is not Mr. Wagner. They're not, they're not one and the same.
I have a question.
Sure.
You're, the consultant, was he, he was involved in the initial planning of the project? And he said that he was on-site just a couple of weeks ago, so he comes and checks the plants and checks the tags and all of that, not just the planning of the project?
Right. But, but not, well, yes, he was, he was hired to, to assist with the annual inspection.
Okay.
But was not aware of the, you know, what was going on in the hoop houses.
I was just trying to get the scope of his services, I guess, you know?
Yeah, yeah. He was not an onsite manager. He did not.
He was just there to help with the annual inspection.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joe Fernandez, and I just, I just want to tell you that about five or six years ago, I'm speaking about Melissa, five or six years ago, I had a head stroke and it was really bad. She took over my gas station in Upper Lake, and she did a very, very good job. So for you guys to revoke Melissa is totally unfair. I think that you guys should give her a probation or whatever and not revoke her because, you know, she just didn't know that, what was going on. So, I mean, I, like I said, I had a head, head stroke seven years, five, five, six years ago. I'm still not quite all the way to my recovery, but, you know, please consider giving Melissa either a probation or something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just answer your question, Mr. Huss?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. Okay, so there are two PG&E meters at the property of Mr. Estrada's. The one in the front is, has been in Mr. Estrada's name since he purchased the property, and he'd be more than happy to provide that. The bill hasn't changed from $200 to $300 a month since he purchased the property. The one in the back is in a tenant's name, it just runs the well, and so he doesn't have access to that bill. But I don't think that, certainly from what I know about cannabis cultivation, that one wire could not be plugged into either a well or a home and run an actual cultivation. You're talking about a wattage and a small gauge of maybe a 12-gauge line that's running 360 feet potentially to a home. You're not going to get enough juice out of that line to run even one grow light. So from what I'm seeing, I can tell just from my expertise that there's zero chance that a cultivation of any size that would be running out of that barn, even one light would not be able to be run by that. If anything, maybe they were trying to clean up that cultivation, is what I'm guessing, and so they ran a line that day somewhere, and Mr. Estrada didn't know about it. But his electricity hasn't changed, and I'd be happy to provide those bills. I asked him to please email them to me, and he's going to ask PG&E for them.
Sure. And did you, did you ask him about the mailing address?
Oh, I did. And I, it's wrong. His mailing address is 941 George Street in Santa Rosa. So I don't know why.
Thank you for that.
There's that miscommunication.
That's helpful to know.
Yeah. Thank you. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you guys had about Mr. Estrada, if there are Also, I just wanted to point out that we haven't seen any pictures of where that line led, only that it kind of led onto that property. So we don't know whether or not it was going somewhere else. I never see the end of that line.
I think that's a fair point. And did, in the course of the inspection and when that photograph was taken, did staff actually observe that cable, that extension cord connected to that, that part of the grow that had been electrified? If it's, if it was just in a coil on the ground, that's different than if they actually saw it extended.
They saw it extended to the adjacent property.
It did?
Yes.
Right, but there's no photo of, that it's actually plugged into the adjacent property. So for all we know, it could have been running on the adjacent property and back to the original property. What I'm saying is, we never see it actually plugged in to anything that Mr. Estrada owns, only that there's a line that goes onto a piece of property that he has. And we don't know how long that line was, where it led to, could have led to somewhere back onto the originating property, no idea.
During the inspection, our community development staff did not go onto the adjacent property, but the sheriff's staff did. I don't have a report from them yet or in my records for today. If I could also add a little bit addressing Mr. Torado, county staff, including the sheriff's office, did search for Mr. Torado. We were unable to find him. He never came forward to contact any county staff. Nor was the county presented with any lease agreement for him to use that portion of the property. Additionally, one thing I didn't point out in the staff report but is available via the pictures and noticed in the reports from our staff is that the cultivation methods in the unpermitted grow were identical to the ones in the permitted grow. They were similar in the way they were planted, in the way they were aligned, in the way water lines were set up, in the way they were named and identified. So staff did notice a striking number of similarities between the two cultivation sites.
And are you saying that the, the sheriff's observations and report would confirm whether that cord was used for that purpose or not?
I would be happy to check our request to report from them. Additionally, I just want to reiterate that we were not allowed access to that portion of the site prior to the second day. So it was after we requested, and then the next day when law enforcement demanded access, that access was given to that fenced-off area.
Hello. My name is Brian Castro. I'm representing Gostelarm. We take care of the property from when Frank had it. As Rancho Dela Fuente, we've had multiple parties out there, Halloween parties. And I've known Justin and Melissa and Michael, worked with Michael in the beginning, doing the camera systems, alarms in all the buildings, meeting the needs of all your guys' requirements to do what they're doing. And I've never once noticed anything illegal or wrongdoing or, I've been out to the property quite a bit, and I've never noticed the section in the back. I just, I do my area up front, the cameras there, and then the other couple areas, but I've never noticed anything. And just wanted to say they're pretty good people. I've had a great relationship with them through the coronavirus. They kept me busy. So thank you very much, and have a great day.
If I might add one more piece, please. The notification through the mail is sent to the records that the county has on the tax rolls. So the PO box for Mr. Estrada in Santa Rosa is where his annual tax bill would be mailed.
And just to kind of echo that, the mailing address versus, I'm sure the George Street might be a physical address where he might live now, but gets his bills mailed to the address that we have.
We mail it to the address that the county has.
The county records?
Yeah.
Could you just repeat that address for me? Because I want to make sure I heard it correctly, because I asked him if he uses that address, and he had said no.
1275 Fourth Street, Box 139, Santa Rosa 95404.
Okay. I'll ask again.
Can I say one more thing that I didn't get in my first three minutes? It won't be long.
Is there anyone else?
If it's, if it's quick.
It's quick.
We want to make sure that we give everybody their three minutes.
Yeah, I just, my name is Frank Perez, and I wanted to mention that I personally seen checks that they spent to the county in taxes and to the state. It's an astronomical number. What they paid me when they were leasing from me before they purchased the property was very, you know, a lot of money involved, plus with their infrastructure, they spent a lot of money. So it doesn't make sense to me. And I know that there's a, there's a mistrust here because it seems like, you know, sometimes things don't always come out the way they are. You're not going to risk all this money, over $3, $4 million, for a lousy 3,000 plants in the back that you know the county is coming out to inspect. It just don't make no sense. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? I don't see any more hands in the chambers. Can we check the Zoom room, please?
There's one participant in the Zoom room, Valerie Ping. You are now allowed to speak. Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. We can hear you.
Okay. I'm Valerie Ping, the owner and CEO of High Grade Supply Co. and Spring Valley Ranch. A little bit of our background, High Grade Supply Co. is one of the larger distributions in the area, and we currently have another distribution in Sonoma and now down south in Orange County. We are a multi-county operator now, and I was in talks with, I actually met Legendary Farms through another well-renowned business owner that doesn't own a cannabis business. I met them about six months ago and was interested in the venue, having our, our wine tasting event and terpene-infused truffle event with our private chef in Napa at this space. As I got to know Melissa and Legendary Farms, we had discussions about a supply contract possibly in the future, and I think that, I thought it would be really, really good to go into a supply contract. We have a few contracts in Lake County, 12 to be exact, with 12 different cultivations. I would have liked to have been able to discuss it more. However, they informed me that their license was, may, may be revoked in some way due to some compliance, things with the community development department. I met with them and our legal and our compliance officer, Tim Moreland, who worked at the DCC for three years and now is our head of compliance here. And it seemed like they were able to overcome all the compliance things pretty quickly. The owner was, as soon as he was informed, he was able to overcome the, the compliance things. The tax revenue that on my business would have, would have created with the supply partnership with Legendary Farms is pretty significant for Lake County, and it's significant revenue for my business as well and their business. So that, the tax part, I think you, we would be missing out on those taxes. We would be decreasing taxes of future supply contracts in multiple years to come. Also, they, they, this family has the opportunity to vertically integrate. They have a portfolio of licenses. And the task force regulation in the community development department is, that's their number one mission, is to support vertical integration in Lake County. So there would be even more tax revenue if they had their cultivation up and running for multiple years to come, also dispensary distribution and things like that. So from an economics strategy and economic perspective, allowing, I think revocation, I wouldn't recommend at all. I think some type of just making, making sure that they're compliant and giving them some support in that area, I think would be great. The indoor cultivation, in my opinion, looks super old. Those lights look super old. That may have been some old legacy thing, and like somebody else had said, that electrical is not going to support that old-looking, you know, looks like lights from 2016 or 17 or something, you know? So maybe somebody's eligible for a social equity app, you know, application, who knows? But also, I know that Upper Lake High School also had their prom at their.
Hi Valerie, we reached our time. If you wanted to wrap up your comment?
Okay, Upper Lake High School also had their prom at their location. They are providing, the Office of Education, free space and things like that. And it's just, you know, I would like to see their cultivation really be able to develop. And I would like to work with Melissa on a supply contract and bring that revenue to my company, to her company, and also the county. Thank you for your time today, Commissioner.
Thank you. Seeing as there are no more hands in the Zoom room, are there any, anybody else in the chambers wishes to speak before we close public comment? Seeing no hands, I'm closing public comment and bringing it back to the commission for, for action or discussion?
Well, I have, I have my head's going around a few different things. It's, there was violations, plain as day, but nobody is willing to take any type of responsibility or responsibility for it. And to me, it just really doesn't set a good example for a commercial. We, we sat up here as a commission and said, Legendary Farms, great job. Here you go. You got our blessing. Go ahead and do your, your permitted grow and everything else. And then to come to find out, we're sitting here again with the same applicant, you know, and, and nobody, there's violations that have been done. Whoever is responsible needs to be held accountable. And we just have to really take this seriously. I think this is more than just a slap on the hand and do better. I need a little, I need a little bit of, of time to kind of wrap my head around how I want to go about, you know, laying down the responsible parties and how to move forward on that. But it just, it makes me feel some kind of way to, to sit up here and really vouch for good applicants and good actors. And, and then to have it come back to this is just disappointing.
I, I would echo my colleagues' comments and say that it seems remarkable to me that once the, once you're looking into the abyss, suddenly nobody knows anything. Never saw it, can't see it from that location when we're at the permitted site. The one guy that might know something has absconded. I don't know if Ms. Smith is here today, but she hasn't spoken in her own defense. It seems inconceivable to me that the person with the actual permit to grow legally would not be aware of that grow in the southeastern corner of the property. I, I can't get beyond that point. And that doesn't mean that the county perhaps has, has cast too wide a net and all of you feel ensnared in that. But nobody has satisfactorily addressed the issue of how the hell did those hoop houses get there? How long have they been there? How is it that nobody knows anything about it?
And just to kind of echo that, it wasn't, it wasn't just a small violation. We're talking 3,000 plants. Were they, were they small? I'm not sure I wasn't there. That's irrelevant. It is the, that nobody wants to take responsibility. And still, and to have good community leaders and to hear the name like Ranto de la Fuente and, and the good things that, you know, had been brought when that was a successful farming stand and the things that you did for the community. I would think that instead of sticking your neck out again for somebody to try to do business properly and, and keep your name and everything clean, to stick your neck out again and hope that everything goes well is just, I don't, I don't see that being a very good solution.
I guess the way I, I'm seeing, trying to look at the bigger picture of what's going on, obviously there's a violation that needs to be taken care of. So I guess I'm just looking for some kind of guidance in what the county is going to be doing. Because I can understand why, you know, there's consultants and people here that are, you know, saying like, oh, I had nothing to do with it, which is whoever's running the operation, the person that's there hands-on, I mean, they're the ones that know everything. They're the ones that are there doing it. They're the ones that built the houses, that did the work for this unpermitted site. But at the same time, like, I'm surprised that nobody that's worked, it takes a lot of people to run an operation like this and to say that nobody knows, you know, anything of what's going on. So I guess just, we always have to approach this, obviously, in a legal way and, and how we, how, how we're going to address the parties that were involved. Because it's, it's complicated, you know, it's a lot of people out here that work for this company. But we just have to find out what actually happened before we move forward, so.
And as Commissioner Hess said, you might feel like we casted a large net. And we sure, we casted a huge net. And anybody who has been named in this violation, that's not on us as a commission to, you know, decipher. As of right now, what is named and what is in front of us is there's a violation and we'd like to revoke, revoke the operations permit, the major use permit. That is what we are up here to discuss. And not to sit here and sift through and see who's left over as the guilty party. As of right now, it is a, it is a group that is being identified. And what is in front of us is, were there violations? And were those violations enough to revoke their permit, period? And then once this goes to the Board of Supervisors, however they decide to move forward and go with that, then that is on them. But what is before us today is, is the revocation of the permit. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I just, I just like to add, you know, I'm, I'm always trying to think big picture, look for solutions, find ways to not always punish, but try to get into compliance. And the thing that stands out with me is, is again, the lack of accountability. The people stepping forward who are named, other than one, saying, this is my part, taking responsibility. And so for me, that doesn't show a lot of, that doesn't give me a lot of faith and things can move forward if, if we were to say that we would look at alternatives to this issue. So for myself, I have to consider what's in front of us. I have to look at what's here, what's on paper, what, what information I have and, and move forward with that, you know. I think that part of taking ownership and responsibility shows character and says that I can, I can be worked with. We can work together. And the fact that that didn't happen plays a big part in the way I look at this. And so those are just the, the comments I'm going to add. And I'm in agreement with my colleagues that we have to do what's right by the code and, and stick within that. So, thank you.
Yeah, so, oh, sorry.
And before, before I make a motion, just to put it out to everyone who made the time to come here today to say your piece and to, you know, give us the information that you wanted to put forward. This isn't the end of everything, you know, this is coming to us first. And you guys will have another opportunity, I'm sure, to, to go ahead and say your piece. But as of right now, I'm prepared to make a motion.
May I just ask one question of counsel?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, it seems like this Mr. Torado was in fact a bad actor and apparently cannot be located. Is it possible to add his name to the list in absentia? So that if he does reemerge, he is not, he is not in a position to grow even legally in the county?
Just basically add him as a named party?
Certainly, we can add Mr. Estrada as one of the responsible.
Torado.
Torada. My apologies. Excuse me. As one of the responsible persons.
Would my colleagues object to that action?
I think we're in consensus.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. I move, I move that the Planning Commission revoke major use permit UP 19-15 for Legendary Farms, including responsible persons. Legendary Farms Permittee, Melissa Smith; former Legendary Farms Agent, Michael Wagner; Property Owner, United Investment Ventures; LLC Manager, Justin Smith; and neighboring property owner, Roberto Estrada; and joint tenants, Carl and Leilani Colerus. We are also making note to add Mr. Torado to the list of parties. This property is located at 2290 Soda Bay Road, APN 008-010-29, for high severity violations based on the findings listed in the staff memorandum, dated September 28th, 2023.
Second?
We have, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission's decision, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the Planning Commission's final determination. So, that being said, that was our last item. And I guess we will just see where this, where this goes. It'll be obviously passed down to the Board of Supervisors and that gives anybody named in the, in the motion more time to prepare and make your case there. But thank you so much for being here.
So we'll continue now with office news from Director Turner.
Thank you. I have one item to update you. Yesterday, Human Resources posted a position for principal planner. I.
Wait, wait, wait. Can you restart?
Right.
Sorry.
It's worth saying twice.
Okay, good.
The, well, but let me back up. The board, I am so thankful the board supported our request to ref, to fund a principal planner position. It had been funded for a long time, but we were never able to get one. And so I just thought, well, forget it. We just won't worry about it this year. But in order to extend my lifespan, I requested the board support, another attempt to try to fill that position. And so they did. And HR just went at lightning speed for HR and got it posted yesterday. So I am looking for a solution-oriented person who loves planning, who has experience with teams and is a supportive team builder. Because we, we don't really have just a batch of baby planners anymore. They're, they're more like toddler planners. But I want somebody to come along and convey to them how awesome planning is to keep them growing and keep them excited about this field. So that's what I'm looking for. And it's a quick period of posting. I think it'll close in a week. So if you know anyone that would fit that bill, please feel free to encourage them to take a look at our county website and go to the job opportunities link, which is right on the front page. Thank you. And I'm very, very hopeful.
Okay. I have a question before we go anywhere. Is there any, never mind. I think this will be something that I will.
Is there any way that you and I could meet so I could see your baby and watch him wander around?
I'll add you to the list.
Absolutely. I'm always open to that.
Yeah. Nope. I think that's plenty for today. I need some water and a break.
All right.
Thank you.
So, meeting adjourned at 10:25.
Thank you.